The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. I want to call this annual budget meeting to order. And if you could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Kate, roll call.
Counselor Campanelli?
Here.
Counselor Evans?
Here.
Mayor Fazinski?
Here.
Counselor Luddy?
Here.
Counselor Pagnessa?
Here.
Counselor Ochet?
Here.
Counselor Lawson?
Here.
Thank you very much. Well, we just kind of ran through the names. You see our, hopefully see our name tags here. That is the Budget Committee. The entire Town Council is the Budget Committee. So we've been working on the budget now for a while, and I'll make a couple remarks in a minute. Before I get started, I just wanted to read a couple of rules and procedures for our public hearing. After the presentations, there'll be, obviously, the town will make a presentation, the school board will make their presentation, and then will be time for the audience of citizens. There's a sign-up sheet in front here by the town clerk over on that side, and we'd appreciate if you would sign up. I will recognize the citizens that have signed up first. They may speak first. After that, if you haven't signed up, you can raise your hand, and we'll take you one at a time. We ask you also to step forward to the microphone. If we could use this middle microphone, that way we can catch you on the camera, so you could be movie stars. And your name and address for the record. Please keep your remarks brief and to the point, and if you want to speak a second time, that's fine, but if we could wait till at least everyone had a chance to speak first that wants to. And I would ask that you speak, obviously, this is the budget hearing, so I would appreciate if we keep our remarks to the budget and any questions or input you might have, and we appreciate you all being here, and your input's very important to us. You know, it's been several months. We've worked on the budget. All the town departments, the school board, administrators, the Town Council, the whole Budget Committee you see here, we put in a lot of time and a lot of effort this year, really looked through it very carefully, tried to, you know, make some careful calculations on what we needed to do and what we needed to do to keep our town services intact and our, and our school systems running properly and doing the right things for our, for our children and our public services. So it's been a long process, and I want to thank everybody involved in it. Everybody has put in a lot of time. It's a lot of time and effort. Obviously, after tonight, what will happen is we have one more town meeting, April 5th, next Tuesday, and we do, we kind of did this on purpose this year. We moved the public hearing, we have the public hearing a little bit earlier than normal, so you would have one more chance if you happen to read through the budget brochure tonight, or some questions maybe you don't get answered. We do have, obviously, an audience of citizens at the final meeting before we actually send it to referendum, which would be on April 26th is the referendum for the budget. So you still have another, another bite at the apple if you have other questions that for some reason came up, you know, between now and next Tuesday. So I thank everybody for coming. I just want to introduce Dave Evans. He's been the Budget Chair. He's spent a lot of time. He's really looked through every little nook and cranny in the budget, and if you have any remarks, Dave.
Sure. Just like to welcome everyone and thank all those that have participated in preparation of this particular budget. I'd like to give a special thanks to Mr. Jim Renn, our Director of Finance of the Town, our School Business Director, Eva Grupe, and in our coordination with the Board of Education. I'd like to thank also especially Jeff Kugno, who's my counterpart of the Board of Education, as Chairman of the Educational Resources Committee. And there were several other among our elected boards and appointed boards, individuals that have come up to me and gave some insight, which I greatly appreciate. As Budget Chair, this year I felt impressed to prepare options for the Council's Budget Committee to consider. I think it's critical that we understand the option and the potential impact of doing a particular item or not doing a particular item. I began with a meeting with Mr. Kugno to ensure lines of communication were open between the Board of Education and the Council. I met then also with the Town Manager and with various department heads within the town. During that visit with them, I invited each of them to look at the options in this sense, that we'd look at particular areas if there needed to be a reduction in a particular percentage in their areas of responsibility, and gave them an opportunity to present that. You know, going blindly into anything and not knowing the impact would not be helpful. Along the way, some of you may have seen, that was posted on the town's website, kind of at the beginning of our budget sessions, even up through the time till a few days ago, a final budget, what I call a budget dashboard, was there. It really talks to what were the things that took place between when we started our discussions and to today's date. You'll see on that various options, various options that were discussed at different times, and there are specific dates in which we made some decisions to move in one direction or another. So that's another document that's available to you to understand how we got from here to previous steps in arriving to this point. We'll just highlight that it's a challenge as you start with a year in which our income, so to speak, went up $260,000. That's our grand list growth. You change nothing and just said, okay, what did we add to the tax rolls and so forth? We had $260,000 to work with. We all know we had competing challenges, a little bit of a perfect storm, I like to describe it as, but it's nothing that we couldn't work through. And I hope that with comments today and we can have some feedback from the public, it would be greatly appreciated. And again, thank you for those that are attending here this evening and putting your input into this particular budget. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great. Thanks, Dave. You know, and we did go forward with this budget here too, just, you know, with some concerns about, you know, what we're hearing about the state budget, so we tried to be as cautious as possible in this budget for the town so far. Their session, of course, is not over yet. We don't, we don't know what will ultimately happen to the towns if any money possibly coming to the towns will be cut by the state. Right now, it's not too bad. We had some very small cuts, but nothing too catastrophic at the moment. But we tried to keep this budget pretty lean and mean, as Dave said, and I'm more concerned about next year perhaps with a billion-dollar shortfall in the state, you know, what might happen to any municipal aid or any other funds that we might get from the state. So we're trying to be as cautious as possible. So we'll move on now to the, first we'll have the town budget presentation, and for that, Jim Renn, our Finance Director, is going to give that presentation. Unfortunately, Denise McNair, our Town Manager, couldn't make it tonight. She fortunately had a illness in the family that she's dealing with, so we send our thoughts and prayers to her and her family for that. So yeah, I think we're going to move to the presentation.
I'm pleased to be here to present the town budget on behalf of the Town Manager tonight. I apologize for my voice. I just found out this morning I'd be doing this presentation. Of course, my allergy season started yesterday, so I'm going to try to keep it going for you. One of our most important people here I'd like to thank is Ian, our technical expert, who helped us get the presentation set up tonight. So thank you, Ian. Some of this information in this presentation is in the package you were given last night. The full presentation will be posted on the town's website tomorrow. I'm going to just start, let's give the projector a minute to get going.
It'll go away. There it goes.
Thank you. So I'm going to start just talking about the overall budget. This includes everything, the town and the Board of Education. The current proposed budget is $83,736,431. There is an adjustment that we've already identified that I will talk about as part of this presentation. That's actually a reduction to that number, but this package was put together before that was discovered and corrected. So as you can see by this graph, education is approximately 56% of the budget, and I do want to emphasize here that when you look at the education number, it's not going to tie to the number that Mr. Oaks presents because we have a kind of a unique accounting situation here in the town of Berlin where we have a department that's part of the town's budget that is school-related expenses. It's called Department 61, and it accounts for things like school nurses, crossing guards, school capital improvements and capital equipment. And so for this slide, we include everything that's education-related with one notable exception of debt service. Debt service all sits on the town side of the budget. So the 44.3% of the budget that's the town also includes all of the debt service. Just a few brief remarks on the grand list, which is, as Counselor Evans said, the basis for the whole budget. The assessor's office puts together the grand list every year statutorily and has to be signed by January 31st. There was a slight increase this year, but it's an increase. Many towns experienced a decrease or no growth this year, only about 0.56% this year, so that generated, as Counselor Evans indicated, an additional $260,000 in revenue. At the end of the presentation, I'm going to show you the impact of the budget on your own tax bill, and we'll talk about the value of a mil rate. The value of a mil rate is based on the grand list, which is shown on the slide, is $2,189,000. We apply a 99% collection assumption, which is very good for this town. Our tax collection rate has always been extremely high, so we apply a 99% collection ratio to that to get the value of one mil, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. This is a summary of the town's revenues, showing you the percentage, percentages of revenue derived from various sources. Obviously, by far, the largest percentage, 82.5%, is generated from taxation. The state of Connecticut really limits Connecticut municipalities in the ways we can raise money. The property tax is the primary mechanism for that. So 82% of the budget is from taxation. That was very consistent with last year's number. We see that we have grants. The largest grant that the town gets is for education cost sharing, which you've heard called ECS, which is about a $6 million grant. As Counselor Evans and the mayor alluded to, the state is going through a fiscal crisis right now. We found out just before this meeting that it looks like our fiscal year '16 grant money will be okay. They came up with a deficit mitigation plan that's bipartisan, that does not include major cuts to municipal aid for this current budget that we're in. So that's, that's a good sign. So our, we actually saw our grants percentage increase slightly this year because there is a new state grant that's called Municipal Revenue Sharing. The grant is written into state statute, and what it requires is that as the state collects a sales tax, it puts a portion of it into a fund that's then given out to municipalities. Now, Berlin was told that our portion was going to be $1.2 million. Now, knowing what was going on with the state, talking with my colleagues across the state, we only budgeted 75% of that number because we think with the state's fiscal crisis, they're going to need some of that back. But that's still provided a $990,000 increase to our revenue over last year, so the grant revenue actually is a little bit higher percentage of the total this year. Just quickly, some of the other things in here, licenses, permits, and others as fees for various things, for town clerk services, for building permits, that would be part of the licenses, permit, and fees. One other comment about the state revenue, you may have heard that there is a cap now on motor vehicle taxes, that this year is set at 32 mils. Now, unfortunately, the budget presented tonight is still well below 32 mils, so it doesn't impact the town this year. However, next year, that will drop to 29 mils, and what that means is that at some point, we probably will have two separate mil rates, the capped mil rate for motor vehicles and then a mil rate for real property. We were very fortunate that that didn't impact us this year. Many towns, my own included, have now two separate mil rates, which is kind of confusing to the taxpayers, so I just wanted to mention that because that's kind of been in the news this year. So that's our revenue story. Moving on to the expenditure side of the budget, breaking it down again by major functions, again, you can see that the education function is more than half of the budget. The next highest number is public safety, which is basically your police and fire service. After that is physical services, which is basically public works, your roads, your trash collection, your steel plowing, all of that would be part of physical services. Debt service is about 8.4% of the budget this year. That has grown, as most of you are aware, due to the renovations of Berber High School and the debt that has been borne, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. This budget was a little bit different in that we did have some strategic priorities, things that the Council kind of focused on in making some of their decisions. One of those priorities was school safety and security, and so this year in the Department 61 that I talked about before, the Council funded $250,000 to enhance security at the vestibles at the middle school and the elementary schools. Another thing that's in the debt service budget is the repair of the tennis and basketball courts at the high school, which many of you know are in disrepair at the moment, a new generator at the high school, and air quality improvements at Woller School. All of that is budgeted as part of the debt service for this year's budget. The second priority was public safety, and that in this case doesn't just mean police and fire, but roads. We just finished a $6 million road bond. We did $2 million for three years. That money has now been spent, so we now have another, a new road issuance of $1.5 million in this year's budget for continued work and repair of the road system. Also, the bridges, Farmington Avenue Bridge, that's one of the premier ones that's worked on this year. There's some safety issues there. We do get 80 to 90% federal aid on those, so the town has to kick in 10 to 20%. Police radio system, which is antiquated and on its last leg, has been funded through debt service for replacement this year. Some new fire vehicles and also some fire protective equipment are some of the major things funded under public safety. Counselor Evans referred to the dashboard, which is on the website and will continue to be on the website. This shows the progression from the requests that initially came in from the departments. Then the next column shows what the Town Manager approved, so you can see that she made some reductions from maybe $7.4 million to $85.6 million, and then the Council is the next party to get involved, and they made further reductions down to the $83.7 million that you see before you here. And this is just a summary of how that's broken out by major categories. Debt service is shown at the bottom. So this is a little bit more detail, starting with the initial requests, and I re-titled this slide Town Manager/Board of Ed reductions because the Board of Education reduced the superintendent's budget this year by about $416,000, so that was included in here. The Town Manager's reductions focused on capital primarily, the Board of Ed capital and Department 61. Other capital items were reduced about $425,000. Various operational accounts reduced $321,000, and then some modifications to debt service based on some timing and moving things around was another $87,000 reduction, which got down to the $85 million, which was the Town Manager's budget sent to the Council on March 1st. From there, the Council went through and made their cuts. Again, capital projects was one of the most significant things cut on the town side. Various operational accounts were reduced. The Board of Education operational budget was reduced $200,000 from their request. Health insurance for town employees, which started at a 16% increase this year through negotiation and competitive bidding process, has been reduced down to a 5% increase, so there was some savings in there as well. There were some retirements in the nursing department that also reflected some savings, so these savings and other cuts identified resulted in an additional $1.8 million being cut out of the budget. If you go to the dashboard on the town's website, you can see line by line what was cut. This is just summarizing them into major categories, but that will show you every single item that was cut out of the budget to get down to the $83 million, $83.7 million that you see before you. These are some of the major expenditure changes in this year's budget, and at the top of the list, of course, is debt service on the school side. The town's debt service actually decreased this year because we had some maturity of debt that went back to 2005 that is now paid off, so the town should have decreased, but education with the principal payments coming on for the debt issue for the high school is continuing to grow, and I will get into more detail about that in a further slide. The Board of Education's increase at this point in time is $985,000 approximately, however, we have identified an adjustment that I alluded to earlier, so I wanted to take some time to explain that. As some of you may have paid attention to, we had, the town had an agreement with a company called Naresco this year, which is a green energy concept where various, money is borrowed, various projects are done to improve energy efficiency, which ultimately substantially reduces energy costs. And the way it works is those projects are not charged to the taxpayers, but are paid for by the savings from the electricity accounts. So in order to do that and achieve that accounting-wise, we decided to move the Board of Education's electricity budget from their operational budget to the town's Department 61. In conjunction with that, there were some things in Department 61 that related to personnel costs of the Board of Ed that were moved out of the town and back to the Board of Education, and the net of those two things was a $428,000 increase to Department 61 and decrease to the Board of Education. The adjustment that we realized is that we had basically budgeted that $428 in both places, and so an adjustment has now been made to reduce that, so there will be an additional $428,000 taken out of the budget that you see before you, and I will show you on the later slides what the impact of that is. So you can see here, you know, in descending order, what the mil impacts of some of the various items, wage, contract negotiations was 0.11 mils, fringe benefit increases was 0.10 mil, et cetera. I'm not going to go through each one individually. So if you add up all those expenditure changes, you get about 1.37 mil change. All other expenditures that I didn't itemize out was another 0.03 mils. As I said before, we did have an increase in our state grant revenue, which resulted in a reduction of 0.44 mils, and our grand list increase resulted in a further reduction of 0.12 mils, which gets us to a 0.84 mil increase, which is what is in the document that you see tonight, 0.84 mils. However, with this correction that I just described, that will be an additional reduction of 0.2 mils, so the budget, that's, the revised number is 0.64 mil increase. Now we get to everybody's favorite subject of debt service. The current bonds outstanding today is $71.5 million. These bonds have been issued in 2009, '11, '13, '14, and '15. I will show you a graph in a little while that will display this pictorially, but approximately $4 million will mature by fiscal year 2020, and by fiscal year 2026, an additional $7.3 million will mature, with the rest maturing by 2035. Our bonds are done up to a maximum of 20 years, but not all bonds are done over 20 years. It depends on the useful life of the thing acquired, so roads, for example, are done over a much less period of time. We also have something that's worked very well for the town, short-term notes, which at historically low interest rates of less than 1% have been an extreme cost saver for the town. There are some projects that we have funded exclusively with short-term notes, never bonded, so we just pay them off over five years, pay much less interest, and don't have the interest spread over a long period of time. Right now, we have $2.9 million in notes outstanding, and that is for roads, bridges, and business continuity projects, which is basically planning in event of a disaster that the town would be able to keep operating. The fiscal year '17 budget includes a debt issuance, a bond issuance this May, May of 2016, of $16.8 million. Of that, $12.5 is for the high school. Now, this should be the last debt issuance for the high school project. We should be complete at about $47 million, which was the town's percentage of the total project. As you know, the portion of the project was paid for by state construction grants as well. The other bonds will be to permanently finance the road improvements, to purchase some new fire vehicles, and then for the town share of the re-roofing of Hubbard School, which is the last school roofing project. So these are the things that the Council considered vital to fund through debt in this fiscal '17 budget. The short-term notes that are going to be included in this budget, I talked about some of these already, police radio system, road improvements, bridge repairs, self-contained breathing apparatus, replacement of equipment in the fire department, HVAC internal air quality, repairs at Woller School, generator, the basketball and tennis courts at the high school, some planning for pond dams, improvements that would be made there, and business continuity initiatives. So these approximately $6 million of new notes are in the budget for 2017. Moving on to just a pictorial description, first, this is historic laybacks from fiscal year 2006 and '07 to the current year. You can see how the budget, in the early years, the town debt was exceeded the schools, far exceeded the schools in most years, up until the most current couple of years as the high school debt has started to come on board, and now that is the majority of the debt. But you can see how the debt has increased over the years from 2006, over the past 10 years, from levels of a little less than $3 million to over $6 million, and this is the debt service, and this is the principal of interest that we actually pay on outstanding This is a projection of the debt service from the current year over the next 20. So you'll see a little bit here about what I described in the last slide, where in the year 2019, '20 is when you start seeing a decline. In case you can't read this, the colors here, the purple is the current debt, that's already outstanding. The red is 2016 issue, the May of 2016 issue added on to that, those projects that I just talked about. And then the blue is the notes that we're going to issue when they're eventually bonded, how they're going to progress out. So you can see the changes broken down by what's out there currently versus the new things that are budgeted in this year's budget. The next concept I want to talk a little bit about is fund balance. General fund balance is basically what's left over at the end of the year after revenues are subtracted from expenses at the end of the year. General guidelines the town has always followed are to keep the fund balance between 11% and 15% of the budget, and this is what's there in case an emergency happens. The mayor spoke about next year and his possibility of the state defunding us a substantial amount of money. If something like that happened, it would be absorbed through the fund balance, so when we go to issue- When we go to issue bonds and the rating agencies look at the stability of the town, they take a look at that to make sure the levels are appropriate. And we have been maintaining the levels very well, which has allowed us to budget a portion of fund balance to reduce the mill rate that's passed out to the taxpayers. So again, in the fiscal year seventeen budget, which is consistent with the past few, we've budgeted one-point-eight million of fund balance to offset the mill rate. As you can see, we've done well the past few years managing expenses below budget, and we haven't had to actually use any of that one-point-eight million. So we've been able to continue to do that again for this year. That shows the progression of fund balance over the past five years, and so it is right in the middle of the eleven to fifteen percent currently, at about thirteen-point-one percent of the budget. Not going to spend too much time on this slide, this isn't something that, we have a separate water control commission that determines the water and sewer budget. It is not part of the general fund, it is not part of the mill rate, as you know, you get a separate water bill. And so it's an enterprise fund, which means that it supports its own operations based on the fees that it raises. So this year's budget is five-point-seven million dollars. And there is a, it's important to note, that there is a rate study that's being planned for, I believe, next year, so they are taking a look at the rates for next year. So in summary, the proposed budget maintains all your existing services, funding of the strategic measures of which I talked, and the mill rate in the budget you're looking at right now is thirty-one-point-one-nine mil. But after this adjustment that I spoke about, it'll be thirty-point-nine-nine mils, which is a point-six-four mil increase over what the mill rate is currently, thirty-point-three-five. And that translated into the impact on the individual taxpayer using an average-priced house. And I do want to point out that if you look at the dashboard on the town website, it's an Excel file active, so you can actually go in there and plug your own value of your own house to see what the impact to you is. For this purpose, I've just used an average value. So you can see that the proposed two thousand and seventeen budget would result on this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house in approximately a two-point-eight percent increase in taxes. After the adjustment, it's about a two-point-one percent increase in taxes. And finally, after the council makes whatever final changes, if there are any, the budget will be sent to referendum, which will take place by charter the last Tuesday of April, April twenty-sixth, so I hope everybody will get out there and vote. And the town clerk also asked me to remind everyone, if you need absentee ballots to vote in the referendum, they will be available on April seventh in her office. Thank you very much. I'll entertain questions later on after the Board of Education. I'd like to reintroduce the mayor now.
Thank you, Jim, for that. We'll go ahead and go with the Board of Ed. I just wanted to mention, sorry for the seating in here. I know it's not the most comfortable room, but the school is rehearsing a play over there. We didn't want to disrupt there. I think it's their final rehearsal, so hence, we're here, which is working fine. So I want to introduce Tim Oaks, President of the Board of Education. He will present the Board of Ed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he said, my name is Tim Oaks, I am the President of the Board of Ed. I'd like to start off by thanking and congratulating all of my fellow board members who are here this evening and helped over the last four months to put together our budget. We have Matt Tenza, Joanne Angelico-Stetson, Jeff Cugno, Robin Evans, Jamie Miller, Julia Monti, Dr. Kerry Sashu, Bill Rasmussen. So again, thank you to all your guys, all your hard work and your efforts with our budget. It was certainly a difficult budget year for us, as it was for the town, but we have some numbers that we are comfortable with working with for now. So just to give sort of a, an overview summary, in our current budget, we're at forty-one million, four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two. The initial request from the superintendent was for approximately one-point-six million in increases over last year. The Board of Education, through the Ed Resources Committee, took a look at that, and in understanding the difficult times that we knew we were in, requested a one percent reduction of our budget, which was the four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, five-twenty-nine. The town council, as was mentioned, suggested a two-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction, and then the Department sixty-one of four-hundred-and-twenty-eight, five-forty-one. Just over a million dollars' worth of reductions brings us to a net increase of five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty dollars. That puts us at just over forty-two million dollars, which is a one-point-three-four percent increase to our budget from last year to this year. Breaking that into a pictorial, you can see salary and benefits are our biggest driver, and we'll touch on that in a moment. Contracted services and tuition are fairly close, and the transportation, supplies, equipment, and other are all essentially negligible. The large dip in utilities is the Naresco savings and transfer of funds, as Mr. Wren indicated. There's not really a major reduction, it's just a transfer to the town side to bring that money to them. From the main budget drivers, our salaries and benefits are what make up our district, right? Our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our custodians, our cooks, our technicians, everybody involved is roughly eighty-three percent of our budget. We are a people-driven operation. Without the people, we can't teach the kids. So we're looking at about one-point-two-five million worth of increases to our budget for salaries and benefits. That is a combination of contractual agreements based on negotiated raises and benefits to the different bargaining units that we have, teachers, administrators, et cetera, as well as the Department sixty-one adjustments for benefits and pensions and things like that going into that budget. In particular, we have three positions that are in our budget for this year for new additions. We have a full-time BLAST paraprofessional, and our BLAST program is a group of our youngest kids who are in need of individualized programming and special attention, and that paraprofessional will help out there. We have a zero-point-five halftime special education teacher at the high school. As our special education population shifts and adjusts, the needs are moving to the high school. We also have a zero-point-eight speech and language clinician, that would be essentially four days a week for this person, who will be working with a number of different kids throughout the district, in particular, in the preschool and the BLAST programs, helping kids who have delays on their speech or reading or what have you in those areas. Those are the highlights of what we've added. And just as a little reminder, like I said, eighty-three percent is our staff, and if you take a look at some of these pictures, they are really enjoying themselves and having a good time despite working their tails off, day in and day out, and we thank them for that every day. Moving on, we've got our contracted services, which is about a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars' worth of increase over last year. Last year's budget, as a point of reference, was about one-point-three-eight million and comprises about three-point-three percent of our overall budget. Contracted services are things like athletic officials, support services for PPTs, IEDs, 504s, different individualized education plans to help kids learn in the way that they need to learn. The reconditioning of equipment throughout all of our athletic programs and various medical supplies and services with the people involved. Our utilities, obviously, with the Naresco and the Department sixty-one adjustments, are down significantly, over nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. That budget area now comprises only about three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars overall, which is less than one percent. Things that are in there are still things like the cooking gas at the various schools and those types, internet expenses, telephone expenses, things of those nature that still remain in our budget. Next, we have transportation, just a modest sixty-two-thousand-dollar increase there. We're currently at about two-point-four million on an annual basis for transportation services. It's about five-point-seven percent of our budget. We're talking about buses and vans to get kids to and from where they're going, both in our district and to other locations like the VoAG schools, of that nature. Next, we've got tuition. Tuition's up about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. This is as best an estimate as we can have. Obviously, there may be other kids who have not yet decided to go into this, and this would be an area that could increase or decrease, depending on where kids want to go. The current budget's just over one-point-eight million, about four-and-a-half percent of our budget. And as I said, it's the VoAG placements, magnet schools, where we have tuition obligations to pay for those kids who choose to go to magnet schools, and special education placements, where we have a situation where our special education department, which is quite frankly fantastic, is just incapable of helping those kids. They are just too specialized or too in need of services and support that we don't have the time and bandwidth to provide. Next, we have our supplies. This is down modestly. We're looking at things like books and paper and pencils. Of note, I think it is, I had a conversation with someone just last week in the Wallingford area, and they were very unhappy with the fact that their kids who were in middle school did not have textbooks for history. And I'm happy to say that, including art supplies, we do still have textbooks. I think it's, we all think it's very important that kids learn from books, as much as we are a technology society. There are certain things that you still need that official tool to say, this is where you're going to learn it from, and this is what it's going to be, things like history or classics. They've already happened, they've been documented, and they're not changing again, so we can put those in a book. Our current supplies budget is just over a million, it's about two-and-a-half percent of our overall. Equipment, again, modest change. This is a small overall number, fifty-nine thousand for the year, things like copiers, athletic equipment, filters for projectors. And then finally, the other category, which is, again, ninety-one thousand dollars for an annual number, we're looking at only about ninety-two-hundred dollars of an increase. Things like dues, memberships, various organizations that we as a district need to be involved Moving into our capital and our site and building, we originally, from a capital perspective, requested one-point-zero-two-four million dollars. The town manager reduced that to five-hundred-and-forty-thousand, nine-sixty-five. The town council has reduced it to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The capital budget typically covers things like vans that we use to drive kids around at the district zones, things like treadmills in the wellness center here at McGee, various computer equipment, the vestibules, as was mentioned, in the town budget is the other item that was in that budget. This year's out, this year's capital budget's currently at sixty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Then our other category is our second building. The original request that we had to the town was two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Town manager reduced that to one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, oh-sixty-six, and the town council brought it down to fifty thousand dollars. Now, this is for all five schools in the district and covers things like carpeting, paint, masonry repair work, all those types of things that need to be done to the buildings. If you have an opportunity to go check out the play this weekend here in McGee, take a look at the carpets and the chairs in that room. While they're still usable, they are certainly very well-worn. And our current budget on that is thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred dollars. As Mr. Wren indicated, we are issuing the last of the high school debt this year, the town, and the school is still on schedule for substantial completion in September of this year, September thirtieth. So we will expect to have a completed Berlin High School before Berlin Fair, if all goes And that's all I have. I will give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Take our seats up here and commence with the audience of citizens. Okay, I don't know, do we have any sign, no, no sign up, so okay, so we'll go with hands. So again, just remember, if you remember just a few rules, raise your hand, I'll maybe, you know, start over in the side of the room and work my way over. And just keep them brief and to the point, try and answer your questions if we can, and not, we'll get back to it. So with that said, questions starting over on this side or wherever, if anybody wants to ask a question, address us. Yeah, yeah, you can, you know, step up to the mic, don't be shy. Yes? Anybody, anybody. You're all here, you're welcome to speak.
My name is Rita Schenkman. I live at seventy-nine C. Drive in the Berlin Bechlin Farms condominium.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My husband and I are new to the community. We have moved here from New York, and we're trying to sort out Connecticut finances as well as condo life. I'm here to ask about the trash rebate. From what I gather, we're paying the same mill rate as everybody else who lives in Berlin, and yet we do not get street lighting, snow removal, or trash removal. We pay for that separately. And I was just wondering why that is and how that comes about, that we're not entitled to the same, excuse me, to the same services as the rest of the town. I'm hoping that the trash rebate that we got last year will not be eliminated from this year's budget.
Okay, yeah, I can answer that. Yes, the trash rebate's not, trash rebate is not eliminated. We did, no, it's still, it still will remain to all the condo associations in town. I think we, all we did was we reduced the overall trash budget by a small amount, but that was for everyone in town. As far as your developments, you know, I guess there does seem to be some confusion as to these developments in town, having spent sixteen years on planning and zoning, when these developments came to town, when the developer came to the town, and having lived in one of these developments in Stamford, you know, the, kind of the deal that we made on these developments is they're, they're a private development, the roads are private, obviously you pay your homeowner's dues, generally included in that, and plus the developments that, all of them that we approved in town that I'm aware of other than before my tenure on planning and zoning, included generally trash, trash removal, you know, snow removal, the repair of roads.
Street lighting.
Street lighting typically, that's all falls to the association that you have in your homeowner's association.
Although, this is not supposed to be covered in our taxes, we're paying the same as everybody else.
Right, well, that, that's not the type of development that the town approved, and that's, you know, when the developers come to town with those type of developments, one of the ways they, in essence, sell it to the town is that it will be a private association that will take care of some of those services. Yes, I understand you're paying the same taxes, I get it. Like I said, I lived in one in Stamford and had the same circumstances, so I understand it very well, but... it very well, but, um, I did know from my, you know, condo documents when I bought the, uh, the residence, uh, that that's, that's what I was getting into, and, and that's just the type of development it is, and obviously, the towns, and, you know, we have since limited some of those developments, particularly some of the over fifty-five developments, uh, but, uh, that's just what you, you kind of bought into, uh, and, uh, that's what the association fees cover.
And we kept out on the trash rebate remaining this year.
Yes, it is in the budget, we did not touch it.
Wonderful.
It's there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you. My name's David Vo, I'm at fourteen Canoe Burge Court, Silver Lake Condos. Just to add a little bit of flavor to that, when, when I moved into, uh, my condo, I knew there was a tax rebate for the trash, and there was nothing that I saw that would have indicated that I wouldn't get that forever. So, so maybe when they built the condos, the, the people that built it made a deal with the town, but the people that moved into the condos don't necessarily know about that deal.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I could, yeah, I can understand that. I, I, I hope that if you look back to your condo documents, you know, when you, when you bought it, it, it should all be, because generally, we would, you know, we reviewed that, the town would have reviewed those documents, and, and we do, uh, you know, when we approve a, a plan of, uh, development like that, a, a development, you know, we, whatever the developer and the town agrees to, you know, we always emphasize to the developer that, that obviously will be passed on to each new homeowner that buys a residence in there, that this is the private association that you're buying into, and that's what the town, you know, the, the association dues will cover, and that's generally the, you know, the maintenance, the roads, the lights, and the trash. I mean, I think we, uh, I think what happened with the, uh, trash rebate, um, which is unusual for a town to do that, but I think we had some older developments, is my understanding, that was before my time in the council, but we had some older developments that, uh, we, we were rebating some of the trash to them, some of the, the trash fees to them, so, once I, I believe, uh, they figured that out, we extended that rebate to all of the condo owners. But that typically was not the deal that those developments were supposed to be, and, again, that's just the type of development it is, it's, it's a private association, hence everything inside is considered private, and, you know, other than, obviously, fire protection, police services, uh, that, that would be the responsibility of the homeowners and their association, so...
So, I, I would agree, that I could probably look at my condo docs, and perhaps it says that, but when I moved in...
Right.
It also, we were getting a rebate.
Yeah.
Which I thought, okay.
And that's why, and, and you're getting it, and you're gonna continue getting it.
And, and, as my esteemed colleague...
Right.
...said, we, we do pay the same tax rate.
No, I, I understand that, I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
I'll start from the beginning. So, Jared Mathis, I live over on one ninety-three Sabbath Hill, been in town for four years. One of the things that attracted me to, to Berlin was the low mill rate, and since moving in, I've seen, you know, it keeps creeping up, you know, bit by bit, and, you know, I understand that the work going to setting this budget took a lot of time, a lot of, you know, things had to be observed and, you know, cut, make changes. I'm just kind of curious, looking ahead and knowing how the state is, you know, going through some tough times, how are we going to adjust so that we don't have to continue to increase the mill rate year after year while, you know, you know, threat, the threats of hurting services by not increasing the rates? And what are we gonna do to help attract additional revenue that's not just, you know, people sitting in here, right, the folks that, you know, attracting businesses? Just curious about that.
Um, I'll, I'll speak for a moment, if anyone else wants to speak, you guys are just gonna walk away. I mean, we are gonna, you know, moving forward, I mean, we have had, really, really, in the last few months since I've been mayor, we've actually had some new businesses open up, and, uh, one of them returned to town, actually, so, yeah, we're, we're gonna continue to work on that, you know, we have a pretty vibrant Economic Development Commission, Eric and I, Development Director, he's, uh, very active, he's relatively new, but he's doing a great job, so, yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking at really every way possible to bring in some more tax revenue, um, as is every other town, unfortunately, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a difficult scenario. I, I think that the situation we're in now, um, I think Councilor Evans mentioned it, it's, and also Jim Wren is, uh, you know, the debt, the debt load's high because of the high school, needed project, had to do it, glad it's almost over, but the, the debt is still climbing for the next couple of years, so I think, hopefully, when we get past that, uh, amount of debt and we go down a little bit, at least they'll give us a little bit of extra room, hopefully, to, uh, maybe save on some taxes and, and finish some, uh, other projects and/or start other projects, but will not be, hopefully, as expensive as the high school, but, you know, that, that, that's what we're trying to do. It's, it, you know, it's a difficult environment, obviously, we're in, uh, and it is a little, uh, concerning with the state, you know, next year, but we can hope that they don't cut too much.
Well, you know, I'm hoping that just knowing the way things are, that, you know, there's no law to talk about the police station rebuilding, I don't think we're probably prepared to endure that expense.
Right.
I think we're just, you know, we've already wrote it down once, I've heard the history of politics in Berlin, I just think that, you know, again, in front of everyone, we're probably not prepared to take on that burden quite yet, given the state things, just feedback.
Oh, we appreciate that input, and I, I think the, for those of you that, I mean, you obviously voted on the police station, I don't know, a year or two ago, um, I think that's coming back around, it did go back out, uh, through the Public Building Commission, through the Police Commission. It's not back to the council yet, uh, it did come in at a, I understand, a lower price, uh, we don't, I don't really have all those final figures yet. Uh, you know, public safety is a difficult issue, uh, the police department, I mean, they, they need, we need to do something for the police department, um, and I, I think going forward, we will do something, I'm not sure it will be this year, um, but, you know, we, it hasn't really come to council yet, and we haven't really discussed it yet with the, with the new, uh, the new, um, price on the police station. At some point, we do need to do something for them, obviously, you heard tonight, the, the radio system, uh, we appropriated two point five million dollars for the radio system, and that, that's to the point of, uh, from what I understand from the police chief, uh, breaking down, which obviously, we can't have that happen, then we'll, we'll have no response time from, from the police department, so that's something that we had a fund, but at some point, you know, my, my opinion, just my opinion, and my fellow counselors are free to speak, uh, obviously, their mind, but at some point, I, I think we'll do something for the police department, I'm not sure what that date will be, uh, but as it comes back to us, we'll definitely review the new plan and, and see what, what we can do with it, with, obviously, being very cautious about funding and, and adding to our debt load, particularly at this period of time, again, because our debt load is still rising with the high school. So, that's kind of the situation we're in with any new, uh, major projects, we have to look at them very carefully.
Hi, I'm Lynn Fornier, and I'm at, um, forty-eight Scenic in Bethley Farms.
Hi.
First of all, I want to thank you for keeping our trash rebate. I had a bunch of petitions here to give you tonight, and we've seen you in action during the budget meeting, so thank you very much for all your hard work, uh, it is appreciated. The second thing I have to ask, because we are in the process of our budget, um, process as well, is it going to be the same as it was last year, or is it going to change?
The, the trash rebate?
Yes.
Um, I guess it would be a little bit smaller, only because we reduced the, the whole trash budget, or not, or is that really affecting it?
No, it's gonna be the same.
It's the same, okay.
That will come out of the trash contract.
Oh, it came out of the trash contract, okay, so it, it will be virtually the same?
Then doubly thank you very, very much.
Well, you're welcome.
We appreciate that.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Hunter Mathie, and I live over on Orchard Road, my family's lived at that property for about forty years now.
Well...
Um, my wife and I live there, and, you know, I'll be as brief as possible, but, uh, you know, we're both college educated professionals, and as a household, we're making seventy percent of what I was making, what we were making five years ago. And we've learned to live within our means, and while our property values go down, taxes never really went down. I don't fully expect that, but the way, and this may sound like a, a wild and crazy idea, but every single department has, gets penalized if they save money. If your budget's a hundred thousand, and you get it done in sixty, you lose the other forty if you actually save it, so, you know, I, I've worked in government jobs before, and what do we do? We persuade the extra money at the end of the year to make sure that we have it in next year's budget. And I don't know if there's a way that it could be worked in the system where there's an incentive or a carryover, or however it needs to be done legally, so that when somebody does actually save money for a department, you know, maybe save up for a capital expenditure, let it roll over so they can buy more police cars, let it roll to so they can buy another truck, because otherwise, it's kind of just chasing the carrot, chasing the carrot. And on the other end, um, I got a couple of short examples, and I don't expect an answer tonight, um, and I will certainly follow up, unfortunately, for you guys, um, but we really need to be a, a lot more business friendly. Um, literally, a couple days ago, I ran into the owner of a small distillery that they were in Berlin on Demming Road, and his exact words were, "Town of Berlin was so difficult to deal with that we ended up losing six months of production, and then we moved into Britain, and they looked for other business, and they felt like they were driven out." And the name of that company is called Keel, Emeka Lekor, and they're Berlin residents, and they were looking to keep the money here, keep the jobs here, keep the revenue here, buy a building here, and none of that happened, and, you know, when I look at, you know, where the old IGA was, you know, these strip malls are starting to look like New Britain, and we're not business friendly. You know, I read in the newspaper, worried about a small flower shop selling gifts, who cares? Let them stay afloat, you know? I don't care if they're selling balloons, just, you know, help, help these businesses make money, because otherwise, every single house here covers that bill. And when New Britain's stealing businesses from us, kind of got an issue, you know? How could we not be more business friendly? So, um, I don't even answer right now, I hope I didn't stir a fire, but, um, I will follow up on a positive note. Um, Berlin police response time's amazing, so...
I hear.
I'll give you that. I lived in New Britain for quite a while, and it's good, I call for something little, and, you know, a couple hours later, they'd show up, so, it's not all bad.
It's good to hear.
But we, we need to live within our means, and we need to be realistic, and I know there's not a way that you guys can feasibly decrease things, because then you, you lose everything, um, but, you know, let's start looking outside the box, because otherwise, people look outside the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, uh... Yeah, I mean, uh, very valid points, uh, just to address a couple of them briefly, uh, going forward, uh, you know, Councilor Evans and the rest of, and the, rest of us on the council, we're gonna be engaged in some strategic planning going forward with the departments in the town, and, and really trying to, you know, instead of waiting till maybe, uh, two or three months before the budget has to be presented like this, we're gonna, we're gonna start a lot earlier, uh, not that some of them don't, you know, but, uh, we're gonna try and, uh, work through that and, and work on, on the budget issues much sooner. Uh, it, it is a very difficult, you know, thing, and I, I, again, this was my first time as mayor, uh, not my first time, uh, having spent thirty years in the federal government, I certainly understand budgets and what happens, you know, it's very difficult, uh, things have to get done, uh, and, you know, obviously, we have to pay for them, but we are gonna do some strategic planning earlier in, in the year, really, starting, I believe, Dave, this summer, uh, with the budget chair and, and the rest of us, so we're gonna look at that. Uh, you know, the business friendly thing is interesting, um, again, I've been planning zoning for sixteen years. A lot of businesses, a lot of developments came before planning and zoning over these last sixteen years, and I, I never once felt, at least from certainly myself, but any of us on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we were unfriendly to businesses that came before us. Now, I think, and we always tried to bend over backwards to do the best we could to bring them to town, obviously, as a, as a taxpayer and a homeowner, that, that's what we want to do, we want to keep our tax bill as low as possible, which is, is difficult today. Um, I, I think one of the other things I, I want to do going forward, and after we're done with this budget, uh, and we have some other time, I want to look at, I, I think what has happened, at least from my initial investigation with that, is what seems to happen is a business may come to town, and they may talk to the Economic Development Commission initially, um, whatever information gets, uh, you know, put out there from the Economic Development Ki- Commission, you know, and then maybe a certain type of information, and then, unfortunately, it comes around to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning, you know, we, we only have certain rules that we could work within, uh, we can't, uh, change the law, uh, we can change zoning regulations sometimes, it's quite a cumbersome process, but we have to kind of, you know, enforce that particular, uh, our zoning regulations, and we don't have a lot of leeway with that, we really just have to administer them. Uh, so sometimes, I think, from the initial stage that a business might contact Berlin and ask about a particular empty building, or a particular lot they want to build on, or a developer wants to bring a development to town, perhaps that initial information is not correct, or he just, they, he or she does not get the right information up front, so what I, what I want to do is, I'm gonna start some meetings with the, uh, Economic Development, uh, head of the commission and Planning and Zoning, uh, chairperson, Helen Riggins, our town planner, myself, uh, and just to make sure going forward, when a business comes to town, we have kind of a roadmap for that business and/or that developer, that we'll give them the initial information that they need, and we'll direct them, hopefully, to the right departments, uh, to get that information before they expend money, and I understand, you know, some of the developers and business owners could be upset that they put out some money, and then they realize perhaps what they want to do, or maybe the zone that they want to go in is not the correct zone, and that information was not forthcoming ahead of time. Uh, and that's just a, maybe sometimes a communication issue, which I think we can, I'm pretty confident we can fix that going forward, so that, that's some of my thoughts on that. Yeah?
Just wanted to answer to that one question about, well, do you keep that same budget, you know, year after year? You know, a prime example this year is in our Finance Department, uh, their budget going down by fifty-five thousand dollars. That was a consolidation, it was a strategic appro- approach and maneuver, uh, which our Finance Director saw some economies of scale and some transitions that he could take advantage of in a positive way, and still actually running the department probably even more efficient than it has ever run. Uh, then, Mr. Wren, you could, uh, comment a little bit further on that, a little more flavor, please.
I actually wanted to answer the first part of your question about carrying over operational savings. Um, by our charter, the way it stands now, that is not allowable to do. Um, the only time we can carry over an expenditure of its capital in nature. However, what we have done is if we have a savings in an account due to a retirement or some other reason, the town council has the authority to re-appropriate that money for another purpose, and we, we have done that. Um, I also wanted to bring up that this year, Councilor Evans challenged all of the town departments to do, um, a percentage reduction of their budget, um, and many of us did, and I, I appreciate your comments about, once you reduce, you can't go back, but this year, we actually did take that measure. Many of our departments came forward with a one percent reduction to their budget. Um, and finally, um, you know, in the face of the state revenue, of the state budget crisis and potential loss of revenue, there are some things we're doing from a cost perspective. Um, for example, when we renegotiate our union contracts, um, we have grandfathered some things, um, like our pension plan match has been grandfathered and reduced for new employees with a one-year delay, is one example. We have a benefits committee that regularly reviews our town benefits and try to come up with less expensive ways of doing things like health savings accounts and things like that. Um, the Board of Education is, is moving all of their employees to a health savings account, which, which will also save money, so I just wanted to comment on a couple of those things to let you know that we are taking a look at the cost side as well.
Great, thank you.
I'm Ann Wilczynski, now with the Thirty-three Langdon Corp. I'm concerned about the taxes we're losing, never mind the taxes we have to pay. I understand that the town saddled us with a ba- money borrowed for open space. Now, why would we want to mark, how much are we paying on that money, and how many years are we gonna be paying for that open space? I think only ninety percent, maybe, of your people use open space, or a trail, or a walk. I know I've gone down Chamberlain Highway, I've seen probably one or two cars on this open space, some cars on this one here, and who's gonna maintain this property? It's gonna cost the town to maintain that property. Then, how many taxes are we losing on the businesses that have closed in Berlin? Fine, they're paying the, they're paying the tax on the property, but you wanna have taxes from stuff that was in there... was in there, in the business at the time, personal tax, whatever they call it. And we're not getting any of that. So we're losing that also. Now, what else have I got here? And besides, the businesses that have come into Berlin, they've been given a problem. I think you know of one that's been happening for the past probably a year. They come into business, they open the business, they're paying their taxes, they've improved the business. What happens? They make a new regulation, they sap them with a thing that they can't do this and they can't do that. Well, what's going to happen? Those people are really going to have to start all over again or they're going to have to close up. Because what they're supposed to be, you know, business has been there before and it was there and it should be grandfathered, but they say they did away with the grandfathering business. So I'd like to know, I'd like to recommend, I mean, congratulate the council for this year. You kept your promise that you're going to take care of the taxpayers. You are really doing that. And I hope we can keep you in for a few more years so that you can keep on cutting our taxes. Because you made a promise when you were up for election and you kept your promise. I'm glad of that. So I congratulate you. But I'd like to know how much taxes we are losing with all these other things that are happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know, the open space, Jim, I don't know if you can address that?
There have been several open space initiatives over the years. I believe the most recent one was the Chikowska property. I can only speak to you about the money that was borrowed. I can't tell you anything about the open space. I'll have to rely on someone else to answer that. But we bonded $720,000 last May for the purchase of that property and that is over a 20-year period. And then there was Pistol Creek, which was back in 2011, which was $5.3 million. And then there's another open space initiative from 2006 that the debt has already been paid off. I do also just want to comment that a lot of times with the open space, the state will have matching funds as they did with the Chikowska property. The state paid $500,000 of that and the town paid $720,000. So I just wanted to comment on that. Someone else will have to comment about the reasoning.
Well, I think one of the reasons for open space, you know, is obviously we want to try and preserve the rural character of Berlin. I mean, it's, I guess it's a tough trade-off. You know, we obviously want new developments to bring in new tax money, but we want to keep it looking like the rural town that it has been, that many of us grew up in. So, you know, we look at those purchases. I know the council before me and I know they came before planning and zoning and, you know, we look at them pretty cautiously. We obviously try not to spend a lot of town funds if we could get matching money from the state, as Jim said, or wherever the funding may come from. But it's really to preserve the character of Berlin and not maybe overdevelop it. And you know, some of the properties, I think we've been recently able to buy, you know, kind of center around that area there off the Chamberlain Highway and Bicentennial Park. So they, you know, we've increased our walking trails and, you know, really have made some nice passive recreation areas out of them. So I think that's a lot of the philosophy. But I think it always has been the philosophy with that to go forward conservatively, you know. We don't, we obviously have, you know, pieces of property come before the council on occasion. You know, we look at the price tag, we look at what it will do for the town, if anything. We certainly look at what it's going to cost the town and the taxpayers. So that is all taken into account when we do purchase open space. I think we try and be as...
You're also losing taxes that the property owners have to pay.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I hear you. No, I know, I know. It's a trade-off, yeah. Typically, it's residential property that maybe we're not losing that much. But again, it's to kind of preserve the character of the town. That's one of the things we look at. Yes, yes.
Lorraine Stub, 2270 Chamberlain Highway. I'm here representing Berlin Historical Society Museum, but I'd also like to comment on the open space because I do use it. And if you were a person who hiked in there, you would see that it's heavily being used and people love having that. And it's the envy of other towns that we have that and it makes Berlin special. But I wanted to, I prepared a statement about the Historical Society Museum because I know you've budgeted some funds in there for continuing maintenance issues. And I'm always afraid that after the, if the town budget gets rejected, that usually preservation things are the first things cut. And since we have a larger audience here tonight, maybe people who are not familiar with the museum and the services we provide, I just wanted to speak to that issue and some of the maintenance issues at the building and why it's important. So our group is celebrating 50 years since its incorporation and our mission has continued to be preservation and education regarding Berlin history. We take our role as ambassadors of the town and stewards of Berlin's history very seriously. The museum serves to spotlight the town as a place to visit and a vibrant community in which to reside. For the past 22 years, we have leased the historic Olpec Library Building from the town and the museum has become an important resource, not only for townspeople and town officials, but for others traveling here to do research. We are frequently contacted by homeowners, realtors, genealogists, writers and researchers for information. Whole families have visited from afar researching their roots. In addition, we host group, individual and school tours, programs and events. In 50 years' time, we have amassed an impressive and valuable collection of Berlin-related artifacts. Some of these items are priceless. Our archives contain a photo library of over 1,000 images, hundreds of books, maps, newspapers, paintings and audio files of oral histories. These are regularly accessed and used by both the public and the society. Recently, Town Hall even passed on 90 aerial photo maps from 1926 mounted on three-by-three wooden boards. There was no longer space in the safe to preserve them at Town Hall, so they were brought to us. Not that we have the space either, but no one wants them destroyed. Also in our archives are clothing and textiles spanning 150 years donated by prominent Berlin citizens and their descendants. Although the town and its people look to us to be the stewards of town and farm family artifacts, the Olpec building was never adapted to make storing such treasures safe from all moisture and humidity. We do the best we can to protect these items, but over the years, the moisture problems have taken a toll on paper and cloth artifacts. We lost items because of a leaking roof, a wet foundation and inadequate climate control. Our hopes of moving to the Worthington Meeting House are continually deferred as the town has kept that project on the back burner for 10 years. Since Doug Solick took over supervision of the building, he has been gradually working with limited funds at improving conditions. A new boiler was installed last year to replace the ancient failing furnace. New gutters were installed and an obvious hole was patched in the roof, but much remains to be done. The roof is well past its life expectancy and windows need to be reglazed. The windows in the addition are close to falling out. The air conditioning unit is decades old. Floor tiles are cracked and broken. There are ADA issues with the stairways and elevator lift. Moisture issues abound. I invite anyone to come and see conditions for yourself. The town has a unique cultural resource in the museum. The building itself is an architectural gem, but as with any historic structure, deferred maintenance can bring a beloved building to ruin as it did with KGS. We should be stewards of the Olpec Library Building and of the valuable collections it contains. The building should give the impression to visitors that we care about it. Even if one day we have a restored meeting house to move the museum to, the Olpec building is an asset that needs to be protected, so its potential reuse is not lost. I urge the council to not further cut funds budgeted for upgrades and renovations at the building. As is often the case of a budget is defeated, preservation funds are the first items cut. You reach a point where it becomes pound foolish to delay maintenance. Let's keep the momentum going and see this building restored. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is $75,000 approved in the council-approved budget for repairs to Olpec. The original request was $150,000 and the current budget at $75,000.
Let me just add to that. That reduction came in some presentation from the department itself so they felt that they could do with the $75,000 what needs to be done. It was initial estimate, so there was an adjustment there. Definitely want to take care of it. The meeting house is near and dear to my heart, Lorraine, and I painfully took that $25,000 that was destined to go there and I felt badly about that. Rather get that, the Olpec taken care of where the existing items are. Thank you for your interest and support.
Great, thanks.
Hi, my name is Mary Ellen Maloney and I live at 1343 High Road in Kensington. And it seems like just yesterday that I was standing here before and it's getting frustrating and a little exhausting as I'm sure you're probably all exhausted from the process. Once again, I'm here to express my disappointment that the Town Council is proposing a $200,000 cut to the already lean Board of Education budget. I feel like our Town Council is taking a page out of the governor's playbook of taking from the most vulnerable. The new positions the Board of Education are adding are to service special education students. And I know the superintendent had already removed a half-time social worker position prior to submitting the budget to the committee, or the council. There is currently a critical need in Berlin's school system for this type of support and based on the vast violence in schools across the country and the drug addiction in Connecticut that has already been highlighted in the news recently. This is not an area that we should skimp on. The students cannot be serviced here in town for their needs because we don't have the staff or sent to other facilities which can cost up to over $100,000. And this seems to be pretty penny smart and pound foolish to me. And the Board of Ed has already done a considerable job with creative allotment of their budget to keep the proposal budget increase to, you know, a bare-bones increase of 2.86%. And I understand creating a budget for the town is very complex. And once again, I implore that the Town Council and zoning board be more business friendly and don't at the minimum discourage businesses from coming to Berlin and at the most push businesses into the arms of Newington and New Britain. Then less of the burden would be on the homeowners and perhaps we wouldn't have to go through this exhausting and frustrating process every year. And that gentleman mentioned Peal and those are dear friends of mine. Three of the foreowners live in Berlin. And that was a huge disappointment because not only is it tax dollars that would help us, but it's a great product and it would be great to have name association with manufactured in Berlin, has been promoted as being manufactured in Ashford all these years. And now it would be manufactured in New Britain who put out the red carpet for them. And I understand that the bakery, the new bakery in town, which is, you know, terrific, there was someone who complained about them putting tables in there for people to sit and eat. Now, when I went in there and I saw the lovely countertops, I thought this is a great place that people could meet and have a cup of tea, a cup of coffee. Why nitpick? Embrace companies and building a development in open space, which by the way, we really enjoy that open space too, developing those homes, the taxes you would get from that would not offset, but it would cost to educate the children who live there. So that's not the answer. The answer is to bring in businesses where we're not educating more children when we don't want to support the education to begin with. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment on with respect to the funding for the Board of Education. Mr. Ren indicated that there's a 61 account that the town handles. Mr. Oaks had highlighted that actually in those, some of those areas, we're actually giving more and trying to focus the priority on taking care of safety for our children this particular year. If you look at that, then maybe they want to do the adjustment the other way, but there was really 200,000 more in that particular area and 200,000 out of the operating. 200,000 will cover, will go into the whole 250 that's needed for the best of all safety improvements. Lots of priorities out of there. That's maybe one analogy, but that certainly opened a discussion on where to set those priorities to take care of the Board of Education.
Great, thanks. Just that lady here and then, yes, she had raised her hand.
My name is Barbara Coghlan, 259 Allen Street. I find it hard to believe I'm saying this to a Republican council, but I think it's a very reasonable budget. I'm probably rolling over my own grave, but the thing is it does include a slight increase in taxes. I'm sorry, all right. What I'm saying is...
Yeah, they want to hear that. They got to hear what you just said, yeah. You need to say that.
I may be rolling over my own grave, but I think this is a reasonable budget and I'm saying this to a Republican council. However, I have to note that it does include a slight increase in taxes about the cost of a cup of coffee per week, which is pretty much what we had for the last 12 years. So, and I also note that fees were all increased shortly, what, a month or two ago. So there is a recognition that in order to sustain a certain quality of life, it takes a certain amount of money and sometimes it takes a little bit more every year. And I appreciate that you recognize that. Because we have, the important thing about living in Berlin to me, and I come from New York City, is the quality of life we have here. We need to fund things that support everybody and sometimes not everybody uses it. So somebody might not be using the open space. I hike there, I snowshoe there. It's wonderful to have this open space. We have a wonderful library. We have a police department that, who said, you know, has a rapid response time. We have an excellent education system. We want to make sure that if your house goes on fire, they've got the equipment and training to deal with it. We need to have the snow removed, not this year, last year and the year before. You know, you need to have the snow removed. You want to have the garb, you don't notice these things. It's like an invisible level of service. But we have to pay for that and so a slight increase in taxes is worth that. But I agree with what everyone else was saying about we have to make it more business friendly. I had an electrician over today and I said, "I'm going to the town budget meeting." He said, "Oh." The only bad thing about living in Berlin is it's so hard to have a business here. And we mentioned a couple of businesses that have tried to expand and weren't able to expand. We were talking about the place on the Chamberlain Highway that used to be Johnson's, I'm not sure what it's called now, and they want to sell gifts. So what? You know, you're talking about losing them because they're selling gifts and they're only supposed to be selling plants. If we have more businesses and we make it more friendly for people who are in town and committed to this town to stay in town and run their businesses, then we're going to have the money to provide the wonderful services that we have to make this such a great place to live. My kids aren't in school here anymore. I still want to support the educational system because who wants to have an uneducated populace? On the other hand, my husband's about to retire, we're senior citizens. Hate to admit that, but you know, I want to stay in town. I don't want to have to move. that, but, you know, I want to stay in town, I don't want to have to move to South Carolina. I don't want to be one of those people who says, I don't, you know, I want to support the schools while my kids are here, and then I want to move. I want to stay in town, so I want to be able to afford to stay in town with the same quality of life we have, so we have to have little tax increases, like we've had now in the last twelve years, but we also have to have the business support so that it's not just the people, you know, the property owners who are paying for everything. But I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And I promise you, I have heard that, you know, it is a theme tonight, and I've heard it from other residents, the business-friendly thing, you know, I, like I say, I'm not sure where that all comes from, but I promise you, we will be working on that, and hopefully, if there is, if there is an issue, and I'm not a hundred percent sure there is yet, but I will, you know, definitely work to fix it going forward, so we won't have that happening. Yes, Bob, we'll get you next.
Robert Dacey, thirty-four, I know your name, Spurlem. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that's here, that for your hard work, I really appreciate what it takes to get to where you are. Now, I came to, I came to this budget, came to this hearing with the idea of supporting your budget. So, budget as you proposed it, which is eight-point-eight, eight-point-eight, eight-point-eight-zero-eight-four. I did want to address the accounting error of four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand change. But let me, let me go back a little bit in history. Over the last thirteen years, the Republican, every member of two on the Republican council, on the council, had voted against the budget for schools. That is a historical fact. Now, this year, I appreciate Mr. Evans, Councilor Evans, I don't know if he had an trypony, or an influence on the, on the Board of Education, a positive influence on the Board of Education, because Mr. Evans never, ever supported the budget as presented. Now, I stand here to support this budget, as I said, at eight-point-eight-four. And now I'd like to address the four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. You basically have cut out seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars out of capital. Mr. Mayor, I'm telling you right now that when you cut capital, you cannot use the word defer, because when you defer capital, you're just putting it in a queue, piling it up. It must be addressed. Next year, this year, you were asked one-point-seven million from the Board, from the town, and I believe it was eight-hundred-and-something thousand from the Board of Education. I would suggest to you, rather than they take that two-tenths of a mill, which is forty dollars, and I know forty dollars would mean a lot to some people, but that's all it is, is forty dollars. I would suggest to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, that you take that four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand with a directive to the superintendent of schools, to the town manager, and say, address the needs of the town in terms of capital. The town engineer made a point, the same point I just made, that you're going to back up, back up on the capital. Two thousand and three, the Republican council at that time put zero, zero money in capital. We have been paying the penalty for that over the years. We've built up a structure over these past few years of addressing capital, using different techniques that the finance director has put forth. So I would again repeat to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, that look at, put, patch in those holes. It isn't just the bottom-line accounts, it's the future of Berlin accounts. Think as a unit. I am going to support this budget. I'm encouraging everyone in town to support the budget. I don't necessarily agree with it all, but I do agree that you've made an effort, because I really expected you, I really did expect this, that you would zero out, as they did in two thousand and three, the Board of Education, which would crush the educational system as it did in two thousand and three. So here we are now, you have a chance, put the four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars to good, good use, and have, as I said, a directive to the town manager, to the superintendent of schools, to put their, get their tenants involved, and address the needs of the capital. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Great, yes, ma'am, go back. Bob, I'm glad you underestimated us.
Hi, Kim Downs for Lincoln Street. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just have a few questions, I'll try to be as brief as possible. I am talking more on the education budget. I have three kids, elementary, middle school, and high school, and I got to say, the high school I'm very proud of. I've never been in it until this year, and I got to say, it is where we should be. My scare is that we have built it, and we're going to cut everything that it needs to keep it going. So, that's one thing, and I also look at, when you're looking at a town, who are looking for the businesses in the town, but a lot of people are also looking at the school system, and without a good school system, we're not getting anybody buying anybody's houses. So, that's one thing that I wanted to go over. But in regards to retirement of teachers, are we replacing them? I didn't hear anything in regards to that. So that was a question for me. And also, I read somewhere, or heard somewhere, that there are initiatives that are being sent down from the state. I don't know if it's regarding the core testing or whatever, that the town is required to pay for. And how we, this is something that has been put into our lap, I believe, to institute from the state, but the town has to pay for it. So, I don't know if you guys know where I'm going with this, but maybe you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll let the school board elaborate, but there are unfunded, you know, unfunded, the state directs a lot of things we need to do with the school system, and I'll certainly let either Dave or Kim answer that one.
Particularly with the mandates from the state, one thing we're going to be dealing with are the science standards that will cost us more money because we're going to have to train the teachers that we have to do that. There are other things that we are trying to fight. One of the things we're going to have to do is to train people on restraint. So if a student gets unruly, and right now we have only a core group of people that are trained, the state wants to pass that mandate on, that we would have to train everyone, and we would have to absorb that cost, which could be considerable. So we're working on, trying to work with the state to see if we can get some relief, not just Berlin, but all over. Terms of your reduction, or not replacing retired teachers, there were three teachers that the board cut at my request because of the class sizes and enrollment decreasing. So that's fine, they decreased. If you look at our list that Mr. Ren put together with Eva, you'll see less teachers, that's because our enrollment has declined. With the other teachers that are retiring, if the budget is supported at this rate with no more cuts, we would be able to replace those teachers that are retiring without any bigger class sizes.
I just want to conclude, because I am in the school system all the time, and I think we should really be proud of our administrators and our faculty, because it is, they deal with a lot, and we should be proud of them.
Thank you. You know, some of the things that you're mentioning, you know, these unfunded mandates are obviously very frustrating to the school system, to the town, you know, it's not only the school board, it's other issues too that flow down from the state, so, you know, as you look to vote in the next election, perhaps you look at some of the state regulations that get passed, and some of them are, you know, ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned, a lot of pressures they put on the towns and communities in Connecticut that we have to do based upon whatever they pass at our state legislature, so, you know, some of that starts at that level, and if there's things that we're forced to pay for, that we don't get funding for, then we have to talk to our state reps and say, look, you know, go back and reconsider some of these things, because you're putting an undue burden on your towns in Connecticut. You know, we'll do the best we can going forward. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Corey Whiteside, I live at three-eight-six Main Street, East Berlin. I've been a resident in Berlin for twenty years, and I also want to applaud the council, everybody naturally. The Republicans are my representatives on this council, and I would probably give this budget B to a B-plus. And so I, you know, I do recognize it actually is a reasonable budget, I like to hear that, especially from what I perceive to be the other side. It is reasonable, because I voted for the high school, I expected the tax increase because of the high school bonding, and I think that based on the details, that, you know, the other things that are, that are kept within a reasonable limit, I think are appropriate. One thing that struck me though, on the Board of Education side, was the site budget, you know, fifty thousand dollars for all of our schools for the site improvements, you know, normally I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate for actually adding to the B.O.E. budget, but that particularly stood out to me, so if there's, if there's anything on that particular side of the ledger that I would add, it would be that. But on the other side, I think I would just say that, that generally, you know, I'm a voter, and I'm a taxpayer, and you guys are negotiating with me to, to get this budget approved. And my representatives are here on the Republican side of the town council, but in order to get my vote, my negotiation back is for a good faith, it could be nominal, I don't care if it's nominal, if it's small dollars, a good faith additional cut for the town referendum. But that being said, I do think it is a reasonable budget, and I want to offer my support. Now, constructive criticism on the presentation, you know, Mr. Broschu, last year, I remember, or maybe it was two years ago, one of the things that I found very, very helpful in understanding the detail in both town and Board of Education, was the headcount analysis, and, and there was a slight amount of benchmarking that I do remember, but I wanted to suggest and ask for more of that, more benchmarking. I wanted to see, I wanted to see how the headcount was going up and down, Superintendent. It would have been nice to see, okay, we're, you know, we're losing three. I remember being presented with statistics that show the headcount versus student population. That was very helpful. The headcount on the town side, also very good to hear that we're taking attrition, and we're actually finding the productivity improvements, especially in the finance area, that kind of thing. I want to hear more of that. I really want to hear more of these initiatives, Mayor, that you were talking about with looking into the efficiency of the operations, and I want to see benchmarking. So, just on the business side, I also want to add my, my support to the other comments. I want to see better business development, I want to see friendlier environments, I'm a CPA by trade, I work with small businesses, a couple of them in Berlin. I do hear the exact same things. I hear that it's very difficult, I hear that, that, well, it's just difficult, and maybe it's personality-driven, maybe it's, you know, historical impediments, I don't know what it is, but I would like to keep track of the results in that, of your efforts in that area. So again, benchmarking, headcount, you know, I look forward to, oh, I do want to mention that, that one thing that I want to see as a voter, I want to see, and I know that contracts, contracts are limiting in this factor, but I want to see more cost-sharing on the part of employees on both sides for health benefits and retirement benefits. So as those contracts come up, I want to see those, those cost-sharing percentages go up, and again, you know, the attrition on the headcount, I want to take advantage of that. I don't want to replace somebody just because they're quitting or they're retiring. But overall, good job, you guys, and I hope that I can support the referendum, but again, I negotiate a very small reduction in the amount that actually goes to the voters. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just in response, if you would ever like a headcount, we have them in our budget booklet.
We have them in our budget booklet, we present that. We do an official enrollment account on October first, and in preparing for the budget, we took into account reducing three classroom teachers at the elementary school this year. We're not of the opinion that we just want to replace for the sake of replacement. In the past, if we've had a favorable budget, what we might do is put a new position in, perhaps like a literacy coach or a numeracy coach, but if you, anytime you want to go over that information with me, I'm happy to do it. It's in on pages eleven and twelve, we do show the count, and we are declining slightly. We do get the revenue in from the choice students that we take in from Hartford, we get about six thousand dollars per student, but one of the caveats we always work with, with the board and with the town, is we never want to take increased enrollment that Hartford would ask us to, or the state, if it's going to raise up a class size, so we have to put in an additional teacher. So, but we have that data, if you'd like it anytime, happy to meet with you and go over any of them with you, but it's in page eleven and twelve in our booklet.
Thanks, Dave. Yes?
I'm going to be real brief, but Anne Riley, one-fifty-three Still Meadow in Berlin, and I just want to thank you for the work you've done. I've followed it, you know, very active, paying attention, and Dave Evans, I was very proud to see, what is it, the budget dashboard, I've been able to follow up being out of state, I really appreciated that, you guys did a great job on that. I think as people get more aware of it over the next few years, we'll get more people involved, paying attention on what's happening on the budget, being able to look at things more intently, so I think that was a great tool. It made our town council's jobs more transparent, our budget more transparent, and I know that's something that you guys ran on, I appreciate that. Our tax increase this year, it is less, it's, last year was four-point-two-five percent, I think, and this year it's two-point-one percent. So that was great, and I think without sacrificing services, I think you guys did a great job. You know, I really, really, the same on business development, you guys have heard me that, say that a lot, so, that's all, I appreciate all your work. It's been a tough time, it's a tough time we have in our state now, and it's not going to get any easier.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention some of the comments about mandates, I think the Connecticut Council municipalities, which we belong to, I believe, came out with a report with suggestions for the legislature this year to reduce some of those unfunded mandates, and I think they were trying to give, you know, hopefully us an opportunity to work better with the Board of Ed, to share services. So take a look at that, because it's very important that you get a hold of your legislature and say, you know, some of these are good ideas. We're definitely an over-regulated society, so it's hard for businesses to start, and we see that every day. But there are some scary things being proposed up there. Jim Ren forwarded us an email from the Connecticut Text Council, whatever they are, proposals like yearly appraisals on your property at a hundred percent, those are scary, and I don't even know what that would cost the town to do something like that. So pay attention, and make sure that they know that those are not good ideas.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Richard Pasquet, Elwin Road. I'm not surprised if there's a point-six-four mil increase. I've lived in Berlin sixty-plus years, every year the taxes go up a little bit, they're stable, but we get great services, so more often than not, we expect a little increase, and I commend you, it's a little increase. But I'm confused, because I thought the party to my right, to the left of the table, campaigned on no tax increase, the signs were all over the community, no more taxes, yet same thing, tax increase, small, okay, but contrary to what you told the voters prior to the election. to the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Of course, the budget's not final yet, so, you know, yeah. But we did the best we could, and again, it's not the final budget yet. Yes, sir.
Bill Rasmussen, 139 Redmond Lane. And just for a point of clarification, Jim, to get to zero, another 1.2 million in cuts? Okay, another 1.2 million in cuts to get to zero will gut town services and will gut the education of our children.
Thank you. And, you know, we do have to remember too, that, you know, part of this increase this year, which is correct, we would have to cut some more services, I believe about $1 million is our increased debt service for the high school. So, I mean, that's, that's almost $1 million, eight or 900,000, that has to be paid, nothing we can do about that. So, that's part of the reason for the increase, is the extra debt we're paying on the high school. And again, as you saw on the chart from Jim Ren, hopefully that is headed downward in a couple of years, and let's hope budgets will ease up a little bit by then. And, you know, we still, again, are looking at the budget. We have one more town council meeting to examine it one last time, and, you know, we'll see where it ends up. Okay, next, other questions? Yes, sir. Yeah, that's all my phone.
Good evening, Chris Capola, 66 Heritage Drive. A question that I have. The Board of Education budget is a lump sum number, right, that the council approves, correct?
Yes.
Is it specific to how that money is allocated?
No, not, not when we vote.
So every year that I've been in town, and I don't have kids, but your kids are kind of our kids, and we're all in the same community. So when I, when I hear all the time, when the budget referendums come around, that if we don't vote for a BOE budget, that the kids are going to lose sports programs and things of that nature, basically it comes down, if I'm correct, to the Board of Education itself, to allocate the dollars that are given to it, to the different programs. So if that's the case, we don't listen to them. We have to cut programs for the children, we can have cuts in other places in the Board of Education. I think it's kind of, in my opinion, I may be wrong, but the kids should be off the tape. They shouldn't be used as pawns, and they are in our society an awful lot. And I don't think that it's appropriate to try to manipulate the parents like going after the kids. Secondly, I myself have experienced the intrusions when I moved to town, trying to run a business, and I speak to other people that own businesses in town, and people that have moved out of town with businesses, and people that have businesses in other towns that would look to come to Berlin. And everybody says the same thing, it's very hard to do business here. I've spoken with the mayor, I've spoken with a lot of the council members through the years here, and I see that there's a little bit of a change in marching orders, that they want to see development here. And that makes me really happy to see that. So, with that said, if there's any way that you can allocate money in ways to support business development in town, I think it would be greatly appreciated, and by developing our tax base, we can then provide the services we need for all the projects we want, open space and historical society and things of that nature. It all comes down to making a lot of people pay a little bit of money, rather than just a few paying everything, and that's what's happened. And I think that's why the change occurred last November. But the problem is, you can't turn the Titanic on a dime. So some of the ills that have happened in the past are going to carry forward until they can fix the things and get things moving forward. So I was suggesting, and asked the neighbors up at the city of Berlin, that we give the new administration a little bit of time to work through what's happened in the past, and how do you make it better in the future? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing saying no hands, like, okay, one, two, three, all right, that's it. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Yep, make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so move. Thank you, everyone, very much.